But I don't want it to come in here.
A allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your call.
Robert Jones.
I'm here.
Felicity Skay.
Here.
Jane Daniels.
Here.
Dee Danny.
Here.
Jeff Mav.
Here.
Approval of minutes for the October 14th and October 17th. Everybody's got them? Sure. Any questions, comments about any of them? There is no approval.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for October 14th and 17th.
I'll say that.
All in favor of approving the minutes for October 14th and 17th, say aye.
Aye.
Those. Okay, give me the fourth point.
All right, I think we can all see here with the general fund, good shape, five sixteen at the end of November, and five fifteen in October. Copy of the vouchers and old bills that they've been through all those, take all time. Everything's pretty good shape. One thing I want to bring out, in the last couple of weeks, myself and Tracy Dodd and our utility office have been knocking on some doors, and we've collected last two weeks fifty-nine hundred and fifty dollars to be used to pay people's heat bills, life bills that are suffering. We've got a lot of single parents, a lot of single mothers. We've got several people with cancer. We've been able to help, and I'm proud to say that we set a new record. We only have four people on our list right now that are behind us, each other bill sold. It's going to get two weeks. Do what? No, no, we collected money. One of our corporate sponsors, GVC Borghese out here, Tammy Carey, they gave us five thousand dollars. We had people that owed three, four hundred dollars on their bill. We would put a hundred fifty, two hundred toward the bill to help them out, keep going, little bit at a time, and it's worked out really well. One thing too, and we put a letter, we did that, we put a letter in there telling them that the company, GVC Borghese, helped pay their bill. So, correct the position to well much. So, I know that, sure.
I have a motion to approve the claims for the month of October, November, and the February.
I'll make a motion to accept the claims.
I'll say that. I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Department report.
Good evening. How's everybody doing this evening?
Great, I'm good.
Yeah, yeah. Like I said, another busy month for the fire department. We're actually out on a accident alert. It turned over eighteen-hundred-and-ninety-seven runs so far for the year between the fire and EMS. As you can see, how many runs that we've done over the last month and stuff, so we've sent a lot of bills out to help offset some of that cost for equipment replacement for hazardous materials responses or vehicle accidents and stuff, where we put down oil dry and stuff like that, so we're still working on trying to get some of those collected and turned back in to us on the fire department. Couple of other things that has happened over the last few months with the contract and the MOU signature between the town of Ingles and the town of Pendleton and the fire department and the consolidation of both departments. December first, we took our nineteen ninety-seven engine down there to the Ingles Fire Station, so they now have a firefighting apparatus down there that still leads us to here in town with the tanker. Excuse me. So with that, that puts a stocked, advanced life support ambulants down there, a fire engine down there as well as a tanker, all running out of that station to provide quicker service to the residents of southwest Madison County going forward to the area thirteen-sixty-nine, seven hundred south, Sabre thirteen, our area west that way. Last couple of weeks, we've had two people resign from the fire department. Derek Boat and Joe Schroeder both provided some exceptional service for the fire department. So, one guy moved to Florida, which I just came from Florida, and it was eighty-four degrees when I got on the plane at eleven o'clock today, so I don't blame him. The other gentleman, he started paramedic school, so he felt that that was a little bit more of importance and spending his time to get his education and go further in the field of advanced life support. So, we accepted both of their resignations on good graces. This last year, well, actually, December thirty-first of this year will mark Donnie Myers' end of his twentieth year, one day shy of twenty-one years of service for Pendleton Emergency Ambulance as the ambulance chief. So, he is actually stepping down as the ambulance chief. For somebody to serve in that capacity for that long period of time was, you know, well deserved in what he's done for the ambulance service going for so long that he's kept that role and responsibilities and stuff. So, I'd like to thank him for what he's done for the ambulance service going forward. He's still going to be my assistant chief going forward for next year. We did have a change in the assistant chief's roles. Jimmy Stewart will no longer be an assistant chief. Danny Gardner will assume his position as assistant chief. So, my staff will be made up of Danny Gardner, Jay Gardner, and Donnie Meyer as assistant chiefs going forward for next year. We went through some information on trying to figure out a way to help offset some of the cost of potentially aging equipment for the fire department. Like I said, I've got a truck that's thirty years old, a truck that I put down on the front line at our second station, was a nineteen ninety-seven. So, I was investigating some grant applications, and then discussions with a gentleman out of Ohio who has got a very good record of wins as far as grant applications go through FEMA. He had seventeen wins last year. So, out of one company writing that many grants to win that many times to the federal government, it was very good. So, he wrote us two grants, one for a vehicle acquisition to replace the thirty-year-old truck that we have, and the Ingles tanker truck to provide a brand-new pumper tanker truck, and then equipment to stock that truck as an extra, basically a rescue type of a vehicle. So, we'll have two fully complemented rescue trucks going forward. We feel that there's going to be a big need in that intersection down there at thirteen sixty-nine, and if we can put assets there a little bit closer and quicker, then it just makes us a little bit better on our responses. Just a reminder for everybody, we're going to have Santa back at our fire station this Saturday, twelve to three. So, I'll have, you know, cookies and stuff, everything we've had in the past and stuff, we're spinning that back up this year. So, Santa was gracious enough to give us a call and said he'll be there, so that's a good thing. So, other than that, entertain any questions?
Comments?
Yes.
Don is going to you. Well, first of all, Bob Jones was nominated, selected as the EMT Person of the Year for our fire department. Bob spends a lot of time over there. Bob didn't want me to say this tonight, but Bob volunteers a lot of it. And I told Bob, I'm going to go ahead and do it anyway. At this point, Bob got something for people.
Recognition, Bobby. Appreciate your comments, Chief. He doesn't thank the job.
Oh, it's, yeah. I would be, I would be bald by this twenty-one years.
We do have a letter of recognition, like, hey, to Chief Donnie Meyer. Purpose of this letter is to formally express our deep appreciation for extraordinary dedication and service to the Pendleton emergency ambulance only at large. We would like to honor and thank you for your success for twenty-one years as Pendleton Emergency Ambulance Chief. Your outstanding efforts depict what true public service exemplifies through your remarkable leadership and stellar example. The success of the Pendleton Ambulance Service is the direct result of your ocean and steadfast commitment to the highest standards of care and performance. The PEA chief, you have orchestrated an organization highly regarded by all and have led your team through an unprecedented growth in seven-hundred-and-ninety-eight run per year in two thousand and one to now in twenty twenty-one, reaching at eleven-hundred-and-seven per year from the annual. Furthermore, as a first responder and town location, you personally are due credit for saving many lives. That is very true, yes. On behalf of the town of Pendleton, it is a great pride that we recognize your invaluable services to the community. Today, we celebrate you and your individual contributions to the success of the Pendleton Ambulance Service. Recognize the sign of the half of town of Pendleton in the end of this nice state of September twenty-one. All of us have pride in this.
Cool. I will.
We also have a person as well.
Okay. Yeah, I can get it to him and stuff. Thank you. And thank you, Bob, for what you've done. I know when I presented you the flag for EMT of the year, the thing about it is, is it is a, you know, basically, you sign up, and if people can't find coverage, an email goes out to the whole department. He's the first person that signs up and says, hey, I'll take it. That's dedication for what you do and stuff, and we really appreciate that, so. Anybody else have any?
I'll make the ambulance chief, wouldn't I?
I think you've got the T-shirt somewhere, buried somewhere. Y'all have a good holidays. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was wondering if there should be recognition for Mrs. Jones, but when that email comes out, she says leave. I don't know if you need him, but please send the email. All right, Pendleton Police Department, month of the fourth of November. We started the month off busy with the murder trial reference, the shooting that occurred back here in the mobile home park. I have to say, since Brian Williams was not his attorney, we got a conviction, and he was sentenced to sixty years. But, in the prosecutor's way, well, you're standing behind him. Yeah. Prosecutor praised my team, which is always great because we don't feel on murders every day, thank goodness. But when we come together on a case like that, they're great, and they put together a good case, and there were no holes shot through it, and it was done well. So, praise my men, the prosecutor praised them, and we got a conviction of that. Christmas in Pendleton parade, always a fun time, and this year, I think, a little bit of post-COVID. It was a huge crowd, weather was perfect, and it appeared that it was fun at all. And then just information only, I added in here that officers have been working lately more and more drug-related overdoses and even deaths. Now, when I say a lot, I think I noted three, but it's getting more prevalent. The other night, there was a double overdose at McDonald's. The guys gave Narcan, and they both survived, and then the lady complained how we didn't take care of her dog a hundred percent, which we did. The dog was awesome. And it was a big dog, and she wanted to sue us. So, I was amazed by it. Anyway, that's a whole different story, but we had a death the other night on Seven Hundred West. We've had one on Four Twenty-Five, and then we have this double one here at McDonald's. So, it's occurring more frequently, and so it's starting to touch our community even more. Something to be aware of. Total dispatch reported incidents for November was eight-hundred-and-eighty-one with thirty adult criminal arrests, and you have the paperwork showing the types of arrests. They're not just for stepping on flowers. They're, you know, here's narcotics possession, possession cocaine, meth, possession syringes, paraphernalia, DUIs, DUIs. So, there's some major criminal activity. Also, take the chances, it's a public, because we're on the internet, correct? So, I want to push the narrative, the get over on the interstate rule. If there's a tow truck on the side of the road, get over it. If there's a policeman, if there's a fireman, you need to merge over. We just had a crash yesterday involving a car that actually ramped up the flatbed of the tow truck, just missing the tow truck driver while he was laying on the ground, hooking the car he was trying to tow, and the lady went up, like, the only way I can describe it is dukes of hazard style, up and over, and then rolled down the interstate. So, slow down, get over, and we'd appreciate it. And that is my report.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Just a quick comment.
Yeah.
This drug issue, it's probably worse, in my perspective anyway, than probably what a lot of us realize. I think most people high age overdose them, and don't get it. In my case you're referring to, it's just maybe one of my wives. That's the problem.
Yeah.
No answer. Appreciate your good work.
Thank you.
Judge, your line, buddy.
Counselor. The comment Mark made. Also, work with the Massa County mental health and addiction. And it was brought to their attention again, the big thing right now are fake pills. People that are being, pills that are being made, individuals. The big problem is fentanyl is involved, and it's good to be, again, Massa County is leading the race in the state for this. All I want to do is bring you up to speed real quick, as far as we talked about. Mission to you about security. Call review that was made by the state or court. We had, had them entitled to not do this. They went through, and they basically realized, too, as we do too, that the courts in their integral part of the town itself. So, we had a security committee that has been meeting a couple of times. Several things that you're going to hear about in the future is what it's going to cost basically to upgrade what they feel is a safe environment for not only the court, but asking the people working here in the town hall. The police department has also done some significant work, too. They don't have a thousand cents to it, so we can ask them to do that for too long. There's also discussion relative to the protection of our facilities and utilities, how to go with that. So, just wanted to make sure you understand this is going to be an ongoing thing, looking at it. We have applied to the court for funding. Now, we'll see what happens with that before we proceed. Any questions, Bob? I refer.
All that question. You have a timeframe in mind, Jim? Kind of a timeframe, and you have a reference on the.
After he walked out, the security man walked out, you'd like to have it tomorrow. Because the facility is not as secure as it could be for sure. And we've had too many situations, you've heard nationwide, where people walking in and causing racing havoc, and that's what we're worst than we have. We've been blessed so far, we've had very few people in court that have got to be at Knox's stage. And again, compliment as far as police department, we did have a problem we thought was going to have, and the officer showed up, second shift. And it was quite, quite peaceful. And again, having a uniform there made a difference. So, long answer, yes, I'm going.
All right.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Good evening. Nothing to report, other than what's in my report. I did want to bring you all up to speed. We were going to discuss the bond issue this evening, but we had a conversation with our design team earlier this week, and there have been some cost changes. So, we have a meeting scheduled with them next week to discuss those changes and how that may affect the playground project moving forward. Miss Skaggs is going to join us in that meeting, so next month. Uh, Miss Skaggs is going to join us in that meeting. So next month, we'll be ready to present you with some hard numbers. As far as where that project's going to. Any questions? No, no, we'll still be on time to get things in and have the project going in the timeframe that we would like to. Any questions, comments for me?
Has there been any more discussion on zip line?
We have not had any more discussion on the zip line. But we haven't forgot about it.
Any other questions or comments for Karen? Harvard looks good on all the.
It does. It looks fantastic. On a daily basis here, you know, some of them. Yeah, the community did a fantastic job. All right, thank you.
The, uh, equipment that we're going to take out, playground equipment, is any of it good enough to move down by the pool and use again?
It's worn out and once we moved it, it probably wouldn't pass inspection to be used again in the public parks.
A long miles.
It does. Twenty-two years.
Thank you.
Just a brief report tonight. We did issue just nine permits this month as compared to nineteen last month. So it was a little bit of a slow month on the permit front. However, I would like to point out that, um, we've already issued fifteen new single family home permits for the month of December. And Brett has been busy out on site inspecting, uh, infrastructure and new faces for Carrotland and Huntsing Farm, the unit development two. Both of those subdivisions are really shaping up. If you go out there, there's a lot of paved roadways now where there were no roads before. Especially out at Huntsing or Farm, the, uh, exit out onto State Road Nine is now complete. It's temporary in nature. It's going to be used mostly for construction vehicles, but it's really neat to really start seeing that, uh, whole plan come alive. That nice big arc of Huntsing or Farm Boulevard stretching all the way from sixty-seven across to State Road Nine. They can get a much more accessible neighborhood for emergency vehicles, school buses, things like that too. In addition, they began, they begun to put, uh, traffic light signal, uh, infrastructure at State Road Sixty-seven and Huntsing Boulevard. The timeline for that is up to end up. They are not requiring it to be put into service until section five is complete, which could be about two years out. But I just wanted to let you guys know that because that is a fairly dangerous active intersection, that, uh, we are making progress. We're having a traffic signal.
Sixty-seven?
Yes. Apart from that, Hannah is doing a wonderful job digitizing our, uh, plans, making them more interactive. They have bookmarks, clickable links, things like that in them. In addition, she is working with Civic Plus and, uh, the other department heads to get a, uh, a new website up and running that can handle all of these big documents. We've already started running up against, um, upload, uh, size limits for our plans and documents. So we're getting a brand new easily navigable website. We're, we're on that coming soon. Thank you.
Yeah, let me ask the first question. On the monthly building project summary. When it says it's down ninety-one percent, is that compared to last month, last year?
Yes. Um, so at the top section of the permit summary, twenty twenty-one months total compared to twenty twenty months total. So that is November of this year, this year compared to November of last year. And the reason we do that is because we see seasonality a lot of times with the construction cycle. It seems like anymore, they just keep going until they can't go anymore. So if this November was more stick buildable than last November, we might see more homes being built. Economic factors also weigh in. Um, but that is just this one month this year compared to that same month of last year. The more telling statistic is actually the year-to-date total comparison on the next line. That is twenty twenty year-to-date totals compared to twenty twenty year-to-date totals. And so that's, uh, at this point last year, here's where we were compared to the same point this year. And you can see in, in those comparisons, we are actually still up quite a bit. We're doing pretty well.
Do you expect the bank?
I am, I am curious. A lot of this, um, a lot of these numbers, they are so tied to plating. But a lot of times what will happen, and Craig can tell you this too, is we'll plant a subdivision in two thousand eighteen. And then we'll really start seeing the building permits and all the infrastructure and all the things, things like that come maybe two years later in twenty twenty. There's such a lag, but I think we'll start to see something a little different, um, starting in twenty twenty-one when the impact fees. We'll have to figure out a new line to keep track of that stuff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Yeah, I'm sorry. We have any, any other towns that are of the impact fee looking at, Engles looking at it for one?
Uh, I'm not sure about Engles, but I know that Greenfield recently has had some newspaper articles on it and they're actually, um, yeah, they're looking at, they're about where we were probably last year this time. I'm just starting to get it, get it going.
Right now, were they only, probably ones that's implemented?
The only ones I've heard of recently.
We're the only ones in Madison County, but I do know there's at least two others that have got investigation from where we were in twenty nineteen. It made a bit, that guy everybody's.
Yeah. Thank you.
Chief. I was just wondering on the impact fee, if I were the developer, can I come in tomorrow and get permits for the rest of my build out or is there a minimum of what they need to do, like have a footer dug or? Something like foundation poured by a certain date or?
Well, when they pull the, and when they pull the permit application, which is at the point at which an impact fee would have to be paid, that permit is good for eighteen months. So they have eighteen months to go back home, which for a new developer is not, for, for a large developer is generally not an issue. However, what we generally see is, uh, there's a delay on the front end of that, which is getting the lots ready on the ground and platted. They have a lot of steps leading up to that that they have to do. They're used to dealing with impact fees in other communities. So I am, I'm curious to see how this is going to work. At the same time, there's such demand for lots in that community that are planted. I don't know that it's going to slow them up that much. But yeah, they'll have eighteen months and if they pull that on January seventh, I don't know that there's much we could do about that. I'll be one.
No manager.
It's, it's.
It's broken?
The system's frozen.
I have to read it off of memory?
I could help you. I got it.
Okay, so I was like, it's shorter. Um, State Street is paved as of today. Thank God. I don't know who won the battle. Either people are complaining about the roughness on State Street or the people are complaining with pavement. So I don't know. Let it go to war. But, um, so all that's left to do is the final resurfacing on Franklin Street and the sidewalks and then the punch list on that. Punch list is phenomenally down on Water Street. And that's all that my memory will let me talk about.
Pendleton Avenue and High Street.
Oh, Pendleton Avenue. You got it up there?
Uh huh, yeah.
Okay, good. So, uh, Pendleton Avenue and High Street, those are sidewalks that are going in. It looks like it's a public project that's actually private. Kayla did a wonderful job working with the owners of that property, former lumber company. Uh, what's the next step?
Uh, it's Madison and Main Street Railroad Culver.
Yeah, if you don't know, uh, we've been working on the Madison and Main Street, the old railroad Culver. That pipe that was draining, uh, Main, uh, Main Street and Madison Avenue was ninety percent clogged. And our guys pulled that out, refurbished it, put in some new pipe. Next.
And, uh, the trash alley pickups.
Oh, yeah, we're still working on, um, individual cases where people can't, uh, move their trash to the, the street. Did you know that's part of the contract is to use automatic, uh, trucks to pick it up with the arms versus manually? Then I think.
Collar barium.
Collar bariums, yes. We've got a lot of questions about the cemetery. So we picked a, a spot in the cemetery where we're going to try our pilot project with collar bariums, which I don't know what that is. I didn't know. That's where, um, when somebody, um, where you can put their ashes, um, they're usually, you can put in, uh, depending on the size, anywhere from a hundred and forty to three hundred, five hundred individual, shelves, I guess you could say it. And you put the name on there and then you can put the ashes in that. And what we're going to do is where they have the, uh, memorial to the fallen veterans, not too far from the barn. That's an arch around the American flag. So we're going to sort of mirror that. So the first one will go in and then number two and number three and, and, and sort of mirror the arch that's across the little drive in the cemetery. And then we'll put up trees and, um, fencing that'll sort of block, uh, the view of the barn somewhat. We think that's the, the best place then. There was not a plan to, there's no plan and plots there, uh, anyway. So those plots, it's not like we're giving up plots to the collar bariums. And we're finding out that as you, some of you know, we've had a lot of, uh, residents suggest that we move towards doing some collar bariums. So, um, I think next week Brett has done some good work on this. Denise, Kayla. And Tracy, we've all got a committee and they've all done their homework and I think we're ready to start.
In willing.
In willing, yeah.
That's, that's important, but as I said, a lot of people, residents have mentioned this, which usually the same people. Cause they want it done. I know Scott kind of got tired of listening to say, oh, no, where are we going to do it? Where are we going to put it? Not all committees done. Plaid here.
Yeah. That's all I have.
Thank you. Old business. Still a new business. Resolution to R twenty-one dash fourteen, additional appropriation for the.
I mean, you want me to tell them what it, what it's for? The department had an insurance check from two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. And so at the end of the year, that insurance check that was unused, the portion of unused stuff put back into the general fund. And so they have had to do some work that had to do with the two thousand nineteen tornado. So we're just covering the expenses for that and it has to be an additional appropriation to take it back out of the twenty twenty new general fund to use.
That happens not automatically. They have to move that.
That has to.
At the end of the year. That's really. Any questions from the council? Thirty-three thousand dollars.
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-three, three hundred and twenty and twenty-nine.
Any questions on this? If not, uh, entertaining a motion for resolution R twenty-one dash fourteen. Move to approve R twenty-one by fourteen. Got a motion for, uh, twenty-one by fourteen, all voters say aye.
Aye.
All votes say aye. Please agree from the town of Angels and town of Fins. Want to speak up?
So, so with this, um, merger of the Ingalls Fire Department and the Pendleton Fire Department was the use of the Ingalls fire trucks, their ambulance, uh, that they had. There was a total of initially, uh, five vehicles. We've since, uh, upon evaluation from certified mechanics and discussing with past members of their department on what to do with those vehicles. We felt that it was, uh, the right thing to have the town of Ingles keep their fire engine. It was not road, roadworthy per the mechanic that actually inspected it. It had some major rust issues off of the, of the frame of the actual fire apparatus. And then their, their battalion vehicle that they had, uh, which was, had some significant mechanical and transmission issues. So with that left, the two ambulances that they currently had and the tanker that they currently had. The problem we were running into is it belonged to the town of Ingles. So we had to come up with some sort of, uh, resolution, MOU agreement that says that they would allow us to drive their vehicles and they would be under our, um, control or available and then, you know, be responsible for the maintenance and everything and all that. Yeah.
Any questions or other comments?
Yeah, it is some turbo interest.
Right. Any questions from the council? So they, I don't know about looking at, looking at some of the equipment. Open holes on that, but they're blowing any. Are we supposed to do a, a bar building?
The way that, the way that it is, is yes. And the, and the, the thing about it is, is, is one of the things is we did is we wanted to put our fire truck down there because we know what it is. We know the, the history on it, the maintenance that was being kept up on it. Uh, the tanker that they have, I'm hoping we get the grant so that way it could go back to them. And then we replace it with a brand new one. So we're not actually using. And the good thing about the tanker is, is it doesn't, it doesn't respond on a lot of calls. Uh, the ambulance that is being pulled is completely, uh, marked out of service. Uh, we're not running it. So we've taken one of our three ambulances from Pendleton Emergency Ambulance and put down there. So here again, we know the maintenance on it. We know the history on it. Uh, and all of that. So really and truly, the only vehicle that we're truly operating right now that's belongs to the town of Ingles is the tanker. So, but yeah, if something happens to the tanker, then we would be responsible for it to, to fix it and stuff. So. And I've, I've had our guys go through it and I've also had, uh, the mechanic at Hoosier Fire where we do all of our PMs through, actually go look at that truck. And he said, it's, it's decent truck to operate. There's not anything wrong with it. No transmission issues or anything like that. Engine eighty-six.
Engine eighty-six down there. When there's a call to Ingles, nearby knows that we go to Ingles all the time. So by moving it down there, we're not going up and down the highway with that vehicle. It's already down there and it's, he's got the firemen trained. A lot of work put into this last.
Since June.
Yeah. And there's an agreement where people don't know, where Ingles is now paying a monthly rent, out brand.
Fee of service. Fee of service.
Research where before we'd get them up. So there, there's been a lot of work put into this to that gentleman.
Yeah, and they, and there, and then just to kind of give you an update too, their town is upholding their end. I've had several discussions on their station, on the remodel project, uh, that they have. You know, gentleman's agreement said that they were going to do for us to provide adequate living quarters, uh, for that station and stuff. I've seen the drawings on it. They're supposed to discuss that on the Monday nights, which is their council meeting to get and hopefully move that forward to the next step. Uh, so had a few little tweaks here and there. They've replaced the hot water heater down there and stuff. So. Uh, so had a few little tweaks here and there, they've replaced a hot water heater down there and stuff, so. Um, it's trying to get that station back up to speed so we can actually start having people stay down there. That, uh, a lot of their members don't live in the town of Ingles, they they transport in every day. Uh, I've got one gentleman that he's almost as dedicated as as Bob for the most part, and I've. I've only had him on my roster since September one and he drives from Swayze. So, uh, you know, two or three times a week he comes down here to work and stuff, so. You know, we want to provide a place where he can actually stay if it's inclement weather and he can't make it back home, uh, that and. You know, their town board's been working gracious, we, you know, I go down there once a month, give them reports like I do you folks, uh, so it's it it's been a. An easy transition, if you will, so far it's been smooth waters and stuff and I don't anticipate any more headaches.
Without reading all the fine print, the pagers and the turnout here that is ours now.
Yeah.
And the four vehicles involved, you'll keep us in the book as far as the insurance taken.
Yeah, if if it's approved tonight, I'll call Mark Gary, who covers the insurance, he has all three of the vehicles that we're keeping as far as the bin numbers. And stuff and he's ready to go to have that on our policy, uh, first thing tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Conor, she can both authorize the execution of the lease.
Your lawyer, I have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the lease agreement. Who signs this?
Be the council president.
I have a motion of second that we signed originally. All payers say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Orders twenty-one dash thirty zoning map.
We have a new zoning map that reflects the uh, the new zoning districts that were passed as part of the unified development ordinance that we've been working on. The past couple of years, now that the ordinance itself is passed, it was time to get the new zoning districts passed. For the most part, these are very similar, um, the way they read, we've added additional districts to make more specific. Um, districts, most notably, um, planned business has been divided into general business, heavy business, and also neighborhood business. Which has given us some different alternatives for how our business district can look. Um, we've also broken our ag district into two, ag one and ag two. And Hannah and I did work, um, since the plan commission meeting to make sure that, um, ag parcel owners who owned adjacent parcels. Uh, were taken into consideration, so we didn't have, say, a a small ag lot hanging out that was next to a large lot, large ag lot. That was in fact all under the same ownership. So we made, we went through and tried to group together, um, some of those parcels that created these forty plus acre ag one districts. Um, we have, apart from that, really most of the map looks pretty similar, um, I'm happy to take any questions.
What's a neighborhood good business?
A neighborhood business that district is, um, sort of bridges the gap between a general business district. Uh, property like we might see, say, out here on sixty-seven, um, like Taco Bell, general business. Typical kind of roadside business, uh, auto oriented. And the downtown business district, which is historic, a lot of common party walls, pedestrian oriented. A neighborhood business is going to be a standalone business structure that is meant to be in a more of a residential setting. So think of it as, um, actually Parker Clock Repair, um, which was Potry Hound here at the corner of. Water and Main Streets, that's gonna be a great example of neighborhood business. Pendleton Veterinary Clinic is also going to be a great example of neighborhood business. So we're trying to match the scale of the existing residential neighborhood while still allowing people to utilize neighborhoods within walking distance of their home. So we can also, we could see a number of other, um, small business uses working well in the neighborhood business zoning district. We're just trying not to require them all to say, look like they belong out on Highway sixty-seven if they're trying to.
Ed, question.
Um, on the ag lots together, I know we discussed the plan commission and I'm sure if your projector is working, I would have the answer to my question, did you, uh. Address the concerns that my client had at the house, okay?
Here, I'll go ahead and give you this copy, actually.
I appreciate that, thank you, and then I have a comment that might be applicable for the end, yeah.
No, that's it.
Any questions?
No, just waiting for somebody.
Okay.
Actually, you have any questions about the zoning map? A lot of detail. Tell this to us and. Yeah, good, good work.
Thank you. The plan commission did review this at their regular plan commission meeting and they've offered a favorable recommendation to the town council. Um, so we're we're comfortable with it.
That's true, you get one complaint, vote on this for once. Or or you can amend this and send it back, so you've got three options, you get approved, reject, or amend and send it back.
Questions, comments?
I have a question, can, can, Kayla, can you just let me know what slight difference between single family, one, two, and three?
Yeah, sure, um, there's actually an SF four district as well, we just don't have any zone SF four yet. So SF one through four goes from least intense or largest lot, single family to smallest lot, most of them. So your larger lot, um, I think quarter acre plus, single family, stay SF one. But then as you go smaller, say to seventy-three hundred square feet, thereabouts, that goes down to SF three, and then SF two is in the middle.
Do you ever.
For the egg one, egg two?
Egg one and egg two were differentiated to allow for more kind of, uh, we have a lot of ag zoned lots that were less than forty acres. And that's great, however, the plan commission agreed that we needed to have some different zoning stipulations on those smaller egg lots. So if you say have a ten acre egg zoned lot, um, by all means, you you can still have, um. Say a hobby farm type setup setup or, you know, a couple four age animals. Um, however, it might not be the best place to set up a commercial chicken operation, something like that. So just to set some parameters on the difference between egg one, just for large scale ag, and more small scale agricultural operations.
Any other comments, questions? It's not gonna have a motion for. Okay.
I got my one comment that I gotta do, I'm sorry. Good evening, my name is Edward Valenti from Decker Lawyer and Manier and I represent the landowners on the south side of thirty-eight Pendleton Development LLC. On the west side of sixty-nine, and they do have a continuing objection to adopting things that come out of the planning commission. As the planning commission has not complied with the state statute for membership requirement. State law then says that if it hasn't complied, things that come out of that commission are void out of the shio from the beginning. And so we would object to the passing of this, uh, map due to the fact the plan commission has not followed these state statutes. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to add a motion for order twenty-one dash thirty zoning map? I'll second. They have a motion for a second for ordinance twenty-one dash thirty zoning map. All payers say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Ordinance passed. Uh, at this time, I'm gonna move down to ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-two street plate limits.
Very quickly, all this is is a default weight limit of five tons in many places where it's not already designated. You may have designated an area that could be higher or lower, um, but, uh, I need to catch y'all because of all the construction going on. Um, all of a sudden we'll have a caravan of heavily laden trucks going down our, um. Former county roads and tearing them up, so I just need to have this tool to block them from doing that. So, um, the default word, although attorney wouldn't let me use that word default. Default, uh, weight limit will be five tons unless otherwise, usually.
Any questions on this? We need to try to control. It's gonna be hard to keep these parts.
We were just discussing.
Yes, I know, cause. How do they know, when I say they, the police department, what I don't think we are. Explain it as part of.
Although just sending comparisons is eager, so we're. Anything less than. Yeah. We will be doing research on what trucks meet that standard. Would be, I don't know what a triax or four gravel weighs, so we're gonna have to research some of that stuff.
Let's do that.
Yeah, whether it be semis or.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that for the weight ticket or? They're hauling, they're hauling out.
Ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-two street lights, any other comments or questions?
Just one simple question, so probable cause established by just being in town to make the stop. Once you do your research and do what they, then you, if they're loaded, if they're half loaded. You know, or in general, the base weight plus load. I think we're covered to make the stop.
Swim rule, water truck.
I don't, yeah, we don't, we don't, they're not supposed to come in town. Most of us use the state roads, if they do come into town, they gotta let us know and if they're over the weight limit. And they've got it, they can't come in. So you can only come in. Depending on the sizes.
We need to research.
We want this guy. Water is eight gallons or eight pounds. Yeah, they'll just drive, they'll just drive through there, they'll just drive way yard.
Street weight limits, any other questions, comments? Not gonna have a motion to set ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-two with the understanding that. Police department, which is. Will get the information, which is Lucas. So. So. I'll second. They have a motion of second for ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-two, street weight limits. All of payers say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Yeah, let's let's wait and it gives you a call. See, even if you don't have it all, at least let us know where you're at before we. Okay? Okay, last one is the ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-one salary ordinance for twenty twenty-two. We'll be upfront. The office manager was a police department that then did it. Mistakenly. We told her she could work next year for nothing.
A volunteer.
We need that.
We could, we could pencil that out here tonight. The council would like, shed also missing and by design to just for clarification is how man. This compensation is determined by contract. So that if we put a pencil something in, which I can give you a tight copy tomorrow or if this passes. Put both those additions that into it, we can just make that clear in the motion while we're doing, if we can add those positions, that both of those positions to the. What's the reference?
It's a contractor's report.
That's why I said all those. No response.
The contract, the, uh. Activities directive.
He he has a contract.
Yes, contract and.
But that'd be the same thing what we're getting ready to do with Scott.
Well, he's an, he's an active employee.
Yeah.
Didn't have been a contractor.
Yeah. Yes. Thanks.
So I'm okay with that part of it. But we need to bench land, okay? That position of police department is the same currently, the same monthly.
If we didn't, yes, if there's no change, then that person keeps the, would keep the position at the same rate as twenty twenty-one, or what year is it, twenty twenty-one?
With the viral shift.
Right.
If the council were.
Yeah, and what it is, so it's not one. That. Position pays the same as your office manager.
It is in there?
You'll start. Police department, of course. You're hired.
He didn't forget you.
I don't wanna pay that.
I'm sorry, I mean, I've read that fifty million times. We'll still bench, we're in.
An arrow, just put one, what in her head it should be, but it's it's good just like it is.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Yeah, a couple things to pitch out on the. If you want to read, poor Fraser, please do it, fantastic job, because. I've got a selective position and want to, uh, offer a specifically for that. I know that you probably called past years, many years, this issue comes up time to time to, uh, increase the salary for court pressure. Uh, they they handle financing for the town, it's a multi-million dollar operation. We're one of the lowest paid with that position, pretty much in the state. Uh, pretty much to pay much higher than what we have historically, but we are on a point to increase it now if we approve this. I guess the question to have is that. Court pressure is the same as us, we come and go, I'm here now, down the road, gone, and we come and go. The, uh, Willie does a great job, but it could be the next court trader, anybody that runs the office that are qualified, that's how you can do so. But the, uh, next person, who that might be, and I don't make an adverse at all, but the, I've seen several court creditors here in the past. Some like, well, he did a great job, just comes tires into it, but going forward, it might not be case. Next close I grew, if someone else, uh, may not put the effort in as well. So all that being said, I think I'm supportive of changing it for the, uh, to do that currently, but I do have concerns, question for. Going down the road, the, uh, next court trader who that might be, might, uh, not have the same work ethic that they do first. That is probably some, some level of concern, I don't know that we can acquire the court pressure in thirty hours a week. Here, y'all, I don't know if you do that, they're elected, so they do have to. The, I know sometimes they pay higher figure than we do, the court trader is the court pressure. They're going to books, they're going to hands on work to a larger, to a large extent. So that being said, I I think it just gives me a pause in that, I mean, that, so, nothing adverse from the good guy, Willie, that he, he, uh. Uh, works really hard, and does a good job, but we have concerns, like pushing down the road, might not, might not be the same.
We could already set in all these positions.
Yeah, well.
Still, we're still better, but we we are.
Still, I'll still bet it, but we, we are elected.
Because we're elected, that's, that's all that they're perfect.
To reiterate what Bob said, I've seen court treasurers that simply sign our checks, and I've seen court treasurers that do the job of our treasure. With that said, I think a higher salary for that position would make more people interested, that are interested in doing the job. That's, that'd be my goal to, to upping that bit. Whether that happens or not, I don't know, it's back to the boat, but I think more people may put their name in the hat. That would make good court treasurers, and want to do the job.
I would agree with that, I think it would be the goal, be effective, and you would hope.
That's the goal.
If you were hope, that's what I'm correct.
I have to reiterate what Chief has said in twelve years, I've been up here, I've seen. Some check signers and citizens and. Court treasurer. I'm all with you. Any other questions or comments?
We, we have to separate the issue about the park. Well, we've seen an email from you, Brian, on that, the. You referenced the statute regarding if a municipality has a statute. Statute that if the municipality does establish park four. Park four shall best compensation. Is that correct?
Yes, that's exactly what it says.
With that being said, I think we'd have to look at the, the terms that you reflected in the email as far as the salary is going to be. Maintenance supervisor and the superintendent of the park, maybe we have to look at that as far as the. The decision of the park board representing the statute. And we're coming to firm on what we wanted to do with race, with the erasing for employees. And I think it's also important that we have a statute, my, my book, anyway, is number one. Number two would be, that would be supportive, the various policies and conditions that they have. Show a great bunch of votes, do a great job, I don't care if the park board, the planning commission, running. All these people do a great job, they're the best they can, it's what they asked before. And I think the very support of the park board, I think they, you know, they did a great job. Maybe pull the log out from under, I would like to better words, on the precision that you have made based on the email exchange that you presented. That being said, I think the main number one, you know, would be the statute. And I'll say probably appreciate Michael's trial, good job to do and not pull the log out from under the park. But then we talked about prior to becoming aware of the language we're using on these positions. On the head raise, we were talking about town voice, we talked about that and pretty much had a. Within that.
Not accurate.
Yeah, but we had to vote around it, but we had, we were pretty much in all the same, same position. Just kind of throw the wrench in the work, I mean, the hidden kind of thing. Maybe the statute can be. Final word on that.
Well, the statute is, is not absolute in its power. First off, it's constrained, certainly constrained by the budget. The park, the park board cannot say, oh, park director is going to make eight million dollars a year, that council will pop it up. That's ridiculous, and of course, nobody's trying to do that. There's also, what else could constrain that statute with regard to fiscal line? Well, the only other thing I could think of to do that would be the salary ordinance. And the salary ordinance. The town. This is you, when I wrote this thing, I was thinking what I thought you guys might want, so please speed up. But the salary ordinance. Reflects what the, the town council, the town council is different than the park board, the town council has to overlook all various fiscal. Responsibilities that the town has, of the concerns the town has both now and the future. One of the concerns in talking to a couple of the council members was retention of various town employees. And the concern that if the. If certain positions in the town were high, more highly compensated than others, would that create a moral problem, would that create a retention problem? And so could that be addressed in the salary ordinance, does the salary ordinance act as another buffer on, or not a buffer, another. Modification, just like the budget itself, it's on, on the statute that Brian brought to our attention. And. I think it can, I think it can now, is there a case that says that? No. Is there a case that says it does? I mean, what, what is the salary doing, and this is not a new issue, right? You know, one of the things that Brian sent us was a Attorney General's opinion from nineteen eighty nine. Read it, it doesn't exactly apply to what we're talking about, but it's definitely worth a read, and it quotes one from nineteen fifty nine. So we've been, we've been dealing with this for, for quite some time. But the. The statute says what it says, but all the statutes have to be read in concert. You guys have certain responsibilities and rights, they have certain responsibilities and rights, you have to try to read those in concert. That's more lawyers make your money, just trying to do it. We, we can read that, we know exactly what it says, but it's, it's really easy to come up with one exception. Are there others? I don't know. Arguably, there is.
We're by needs, just for matter of record. We're sitting here talking about this ordinance, you know, the town ordinance and the parks numbers and so forth. And, and I cannot give you a list of what they want to do, propose, I guess. And. Starting out with that. When they got the current dollars in there, what they're wanting to do is give ten percent. It was a lot more. Now, why did it go from here to ten percent? It's because we talk. Now, Brian's not gonna agree with me on this, but the town ordinance says five percent for all town employees. Up to five percent. Doesn't mean the department has. Including that guy, the chief, has to give five percent, they can give less. But as the ordinance is written. It's up to five percent. And in this email, it says. In there, by name, that I put that in there intentionally. Yes, I did. Because all town employees are town employees. And I'm gonna stick my guns on it, the council can argue with me, anybody can argue with me and try to change my mind. But we worked hard on this, I've seen this happen before in the twelve years I've been here. It's a big headache right now. A big headache. Where a person retired. And they said. Don't replace this person, just give us their salary. And he done it. And it throws the pay scale like this. As long as I'm up here, we're not gonna play. Okay, we're not gonna do it, it's five percent, we can talk about it, but. These numbers are way off from the five percent. The one thing I do agree with on here, what percentage is. Stop listening to that. The park attorney, will you correct me if I'm wrong? I thought. The park attorney, don't like the old names, the park attorney made six thousand dollars a year. That isn't what this said. They want, they proposed the increase to be five hundred. I am fine with that. Okay, that park attorney, since I've been on the council, has had six thousand dollars. There is many attorneys who want to do it. He's there, and they're ready to meet. I, I'm, I'm just, I'm not hung up on this. But five percent for town employees is way the ordinance is written. And we can discuss it, however you want to. Comments, Brian, you guys are more than welcome to talk.
Thank you. And I spoke to, do you mind me sharing our conversation earlier, I spoke to Steve earlier and. I'm Brian, by the way, I guess I should introduce myself, Steve and I spoke earlier about. I, I knew about the statute a few days ago, I actually read it. Bill Davidson last night did the research that Mr. Graham references. The state board of accounts asked for an opinion about. I like Jeff a lot, but they can disagree as attorneys, I think the, the opinion the state board of accounts asked for is exactly this issue. And many years ago, the Attorney General of Indiana said, here is the opinion. And it's exactly on point to what we've been talking about for the last month. And that's my opinion, and Bill Davidson feels the same way, it's. This is kind of the end of the conversation, the park decides how to compensate the employees. The park decides whether to create new positions, that's all in this opinion, and I know. Chad, that you don't like that, and you're saying, oh, it's five percent.
I don't like it, I disagree.
It's what the law is, so, I mean. We're, I don't think we can disagree about what the law is, and it's what the law is, and I, I know personally, I know, and I. My conversation with Steve earlier was, instead of doing this publicly tonight, that you guys either table this or do a first reading and put this, put it off until Monday. In light of what Bill said, and there was an opportunity just to discuss it, see if we can come to some agreement before Monday. And that's not the intention of council, let's go forward and finalize this tonight, then I'll have a lot more to say tonight, but that's not my preference.
Okay, Steve, Steve called today after you talked with Brian, I can now call Jeff. Okay, we've got a meeting scheduled for tomorrow afternoon at two o'clock. In that meeting will be Brian, Jeff, Bill Davidson, Steve Denny, and myself. Okay? So we can do the first reading tonight, I want to do the first reading tonight. We have a special meeting already scheduled for Monday. So if we need to, we, we come up to an agreement, which. We're gonna have to talk hard to do tomorrow afternoon at two o'clock. I'm not saying I don't want to do it, okay? What I'm saying is, an ordinance is the ordinance, town employees are town employees. I'm not gonna sit back and watch an employee leave. Because he was asked to leave and then turn around and split that money between different working employees. If anybody disagrees with that, speak up, call them.
Okay, I will.
Okay.
For the rest of the room, doing that saves the town and park about thirty five thousand dollars a year. So that's, that's the bottom line is.
I put these numbers.
And again, this is not the conversation I want to have.
Okay, let's stop right here.
See, I am. Sure. The reason that I talked to Brian and I talked to Chad is because I really do feel that we are. Not far away from what everybody wants. And as a town, we're one big wheel, and we all have our little spokes, and as of right now, we've worked very well together. And I agree with Bob about how dedicated other board members on other committees work hard and, and take their position very seriously. So that's why I thought we could have a meeting to discuss this and, and then come up with some type of solution that everybody can accept. And everybody can feel good enough.
To echo Steve, I think we're closer together than what we are apart, if we really look at the numbers, and I think the meeting tomorrow will be great. Do a first reading tonight. Sort it all out and then go to real, as the next.
Yeah, I agree with Brian, we, we need to vote on this, talk about it tomorrow.
Sounds good, thank you.
And then we'll say a quick, I'm not, we can't.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I've got just two more comments, the, the next comment is that before I became an elected town council member. It used to drive me crazy sitting in the audience when we started talking about budgets. And, and, and everything wasn't in when we voted on. And that drives me crazy, I can't vote on something that's not in there, like Connie's salary. It's not in there, I want her salary in.
It is.
It is.
It's under utility.
It's under utilities, okay, but there are some other things that, you know, like under the park board, we still have a salary for a golf pro manager. And that golf pro manager is not coming back in twenty twenty two, correct?
Correct.
Correct, so I, I just want an updated, accurate. Budget to, to, to vote on. Because like I said, that drove me crazy when I sat in the audience. And I can't remember the second time. I mean, what I, what I mean is the salary.
This part, well, that's the conversation.
Yeah.
Can I have a motion to. Approval of this twenty one dash thirty one salary ordinance for twenty twenty two? We'll be afraid, it's okay.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second on first read.
They have a motion of second for ordinance twenty one dash thirty one salary ordinance for twenty twenty two. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say aye. Thank you. Public comments? Anybody online for comments? Okay, that's good.